Are we on the air?
I believe so.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's Monday, December 5th, 2022. We'll start the meeting with Roll Call.
Kriener.
Present.
McConnell.
Present.
Fortune.
Here.
Buska.
Yes.
Carmen.
Present.
Next is the consent agenda. That includes the approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, approval of minutes from November 21st, 2022, approval of minutes from November 22nd, 2022 work session, approval of minutes from November 26th, 2022 statue dedication at City Hall here. Number six, approval of minutes from the December 1st, 2022 work session. Number seven, approval of Class C retail alcohol license, LC to Big Daddy Hideaway Corp., DBA Sweeney's Lounge. And number eight, approval of pay request number three, the final payment for $4,665.88 to Memet Tiling Inc. for the runway drainage improvement projects.
So moved.
Second.
Carmen.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Kriener.
Yes.
Fortune.
Yes.
Next is staff reports. We'll start with public works.
Okay, last week Kyle was here and hauled out roughly 500,000 gallons of sludge for us. He wasn't able to get everything hauled out. He had some other jobs to get to, so he'll be back in the spring to take care of the rest of it. We figured there's roughly 100,000 to go. We were very pleased with the work that he did. He was, he hauled a lot in a short amount of time. And then we had another water main break on Sunday, November 27th, on Fifth Avenue West and Sixth Street West. They didn't get it repaired until Monday, just Sunday was, they weren't able to get anything done. But that's our third or fourth one already this season. So let's hope it doesn't keep trending that way. And then I sent off two more nuisance properties to John due to no action being taken. And I will send out an updated list to you guys tomorrow so you guys can be caught up on where we're at.
Okay. Next, police.
Nothing to report at this time. Our report will be prepared for next possibility.
Okay, all right, thank you. Administration.
Commander Dodd Franklin asked me to announce that the American Legion Post 135 is presenting Sheriff Beckman and Officer Ben Hillier, the local first responder awards, at their next meeting Tuesday, December 13th at 7:00 PM. And we're just busy with month end and doing the budget.
Okay. Any committee updates, any meetings this month yet? That's kind of early.
We didn't have a meeting, but yesterday I asked, after I drove by the post office, I asked Wendy to send out a formalized report, if she could, on who was there for the Looney Lutherans Hold the Ludifisc. We had people as far as, I see Lewiston, Minnesota. I see Rochester, Minnesota, Spring Valley, Minnesota, and as far south as West Des Moines attending that event. 433 tickets were sold, that's six shy of capacity. Cresco Bank and Trust sponsored the event. They handled all the radio ads, all of that. It brought in, these are just rough numbers, they're not the final numbers, but $11,288.25 for that single show. So that was an outstanding performance. And they were here last year at one point and it went over huge. And yeah, really great and just very thankful that Cresco Bank and Trust sponsored that event and the community and brought people in.
Right, that is good, thank them, thank you. Anybody have any other reports?
No, it's, that wasn't a meeting, but I did visit with some of the county through the consecration site, and there is interest with the old Boy Scout camp to go forward with the project on that and turn it into an actual park camping facility.
Okay.
So they're gonna, we'll have to get together and look at all the stuff involved with it. But there is definitely an interest to turn it back into something useful.
Okay. Good.
Keep it best.
Anybody else have anything? Next on the agenda is comments from the audience. And this portion is for people that want to come up and talk at the podium. It would, if you want to discuss the Seventh Street project, we're gonna wait after WHKS gives their presentation. So if there's anybody else here that wants to come up, has anything they want to discuss about the city, you're welcome to do that now. Okay. Next then, we'll go into the regular business of the meeting. So the first part, public hearing on proposed resolution of necessity for the Seventh Street West reconstruction. Darren Sickink and some of his comrades from WHKS will come up and discuss that. And then after that, if there's any questions, we'll open it up.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. And do we want to shut the lights down or can everybody see that okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, my name is Darren Sickink from WHKS and with me tonight Scott Honeybee and also Jack Moir. So we're gonna, thank you. We're gonna discuss the Seventh Street West reconstruction project, which is obviously on the west side of town by the fairgrounds and kind of the H&amp;S Motors and A&amp;W area, if you're familiar with that. So, Jack, next slide. So just kind of outlining what we want to talk about. We'll kind of discuss the area that's being proposed for the work, what kind of work we're gonna do, the project's schedule, because it's kind of, we gotta follow a certain schedule and lay this out. The assessment process, the city is proposing to assess this and how their policy is determined. Then we'll get into the cost of the project and then when any assessments are due and then the actions that the council will be looking to perform over the next few months here. And then we'll get into public comments and questions. Okay? So this is generally the area, kind of on an aerial map. The kind of big oval up on the top of the screen there, that's the fairgrounds there. So that's Fourth. And that's kind of the very north end of the project. Kind of the yellowish line through the middle, that's Highway 9. And then south down towards the airport runway. So the utilities are kind of the main thing that is looking to be replaced. But then also the street needs repair as well. So we'll get into that here on the next slide. So, so what is being proposed? The city's looking to reconstruct Seventh Street from Highway 9. So that's right at the corner by A&amp;W there, north of Fourth Avenue. Then the roadway that's there now is currently a wider road. I think it's 36 feet is what we have. And then for that whole length. So what's being proposed is that the roadway on the south portion would remain at 36 feet near H&amp;S Motors and A&amp;W. But then north of that would then taper to a narrower road, to 31 feet. Two reasons, it doesn't necessarily need that for the commercial area or north of the commercial area, and then also to save on costs. So this was something that was discussed as a way to reduce, reduce the price of the project. And that would continue up to Fourth Avenue that width. And then north of that, it would go back to its current width to be then most likely narrowed at a future project. So the utilities are, excuse me, kind of what's driving a lot of this. There's a bad water main on that section, on that section. Excuse me, has had some water main breaks over the past number of years. And so that's one of the main ones that have driving this. The sanitary sewer in that section's old clay pipe. So that's also in need of repair. And then another section was that kind of the storm sewer is undersized and there's been a number of flooding incidences kind of right near the mole point, which is right between A&amp;W and Long John Silver, H&amp;S Motors there. So that san, or storm sewer will be upsized to handle that. And to kind of outlet it, we're kind of directing the water, would be directing the water south towards the Plant Pedlar Warehouse and then out towards, out once it's in a pipe, then out into a ditch. That would go out towards the airport. And then we would have kind of a stormwater dry basin out there to kind of slow the water down before it actually leaves town. So that's kind of it in a nutshell there. As far as the schedule goes, tonight we're having this assessment hearing. Once we kind of have further information on the plans that the council wants to proceed, we'll kind of work on the plans over the winter here. In February, we'll have a public informational meeting where you can come and talk about the plans. And then if things go according to plan, then the council will let it be advertised. We'll go up for bids, receive that in April. And then if the council, if the bids come in where we've estimated them or near that, then they would most likely then award a contract. And we'd be looking to start construction in June. And so then, as far as kind of the fall, summer there of '23 and '24, so the city was kind of wanting to get the water main, the sewer and the storm sewer all in and get it back up to gravel and then kind of let it set for the winter of '23 into '24 and then come back in the summer of '24 and then put the concrete down. So that way, try and eliminate any sort of settlement or cracking that could potentially happen on the roadway, you know, if things were to move around. And as far as like the final assessment, you would then be responsible, we'd have another hearing, or the notices would go out in the fall of 2024. So, okay, I'll let Scott talk a little bit about the assessment process.
All right, thank you, Darren. I'm gonna go over the assessment process in the next couple of slides. Now, this is an Iowa standard, Iowa Code 384. Very stringent process that we're following. So we'll go through what, you know, what needs to be done for assessment process and tell you where we're at. So to begin a project, there needs to be determined a need for the project. After that, we're hired out to perform an engineering study to see if the project was practical. After that, we put together a cost opinion with that and then prepare the preliminary assessment plan and schedule to the current assessment policy. After that, we file preliminary assessment plan with the council and then public notices given and sent to the affected residents. That's when you got your notice. That last bullet, where we're at tonight, we're holding the hearing in resolution of necessity to gather public input. And then after that, the council will consider your input and decide whether or not to proceed with the project. If we do proceed, the council will authorize us to bear plans and specs and order the clerk to publish notice of hearing and letting. The project will be publicly bid. And then we will hold a public hearing on the plans, specifications, contracts and estimated costs. If the bids come in good, a construction contract will be awarded and the project will be constructed. At the completion of the project, final assessment amounts will be determined. So as far, that was the state level assessment. Now, the assessment policy, that's the city level of the assessments. So the assessment to property owners per the city council is 50% of the total proposed cost excluding the utilities, excluding water main, sanitary storm sewer and the intersections that are abutting the affected properties. It's then calculated using the modified Flint method, which basically states that the corner lots are assessed 100% of the short side and 50% of the long side.
100% of the long and 50% of the short.
Oh, excuse me, 100% of the long, 30% of the short. So with that feasibility study we put together, we put together an opinion of probable project cost. The total project we're estimating in 2023, $3,777,175. Of that cost, the portion that's not utilities and not intersections, the assessable cost is $455,375 and some change. What that equates to is the property owners on this project are contributing about 15% of the total project cost and the city is picking up the remaining $2,621,799. Again, what that city share is, is 50% of the assessable street cost plus all the utilities and plus any deficiency of the properties that are being assessed can, can't pay that based on their core house value of their.
Improvement value.
Their improvement value, yes. So the city shares about 85% of the total project costs. So the assessment payments, final assessments will be payable once the project is complete, so that will be in the fall of 2024. Once the project is complete and it's all accepted, then property owners have 30 days to pay that in full. If you'd like not to pay that in full, then the unpaid assessments will be added to the property tax over the next 10 years with a set interest rate. And then any unpaid assessments will then be included on your property taxes in the fall of 2025. And we'll let Darren finish.
So what the council needs to do tonight, they want to hear your opinions on the project. And then they'll need to discuss what they want to do. So there's three options that they can do, and really it's kind of four options. So they can adopt the resolution of necessity, which is in their package tonight as presented. They can then, after listening to you, they can make changes to that or amendments. Or they can just say, we need more time to think about this to do that at a later date. Or the fourth action is they could just cancel the project and we will all go home. So those are kind of the different things that they need to hear from you tonight. So that's why we're having this meeting. So the next item is, Jack, we'll hit the hook, is obtaining public comment. So one of the things, if you want to come up, please say your name and your address and then address the council with your comments or concern about the project. Okay? All we have.
Does anybody want to come up? Anybody have any questions? You're sure welcome to come up.
Thank you, my name's Tom Barnes. I'm here representing the Howard County Fair Board, Howard County Agricultural Society. I'm not here to object to the project. I'm here to address, to ask consideration in the bid documents of access to the main gate to the fairgrounds during construction. One of my big concerns is our emergency plan, especially for the fair, needs that Seventh Street entrance and exit. There's a lot of people that would be putting in and out of that fairground. And not only for traffic for fairgoers, but when you look at emergency vehicles, that's a big concern of mine. One gate, when you have 8, 9,000 people on the grounds on the weekends per day, it's kind of scary trying to get people in and out there at one gate. So my complaint, my request to you in writing your bid documents is to give a timeframe of the week or two weeks surrounding the fair that access is available through the Seventh Street case.
May I ask when the fair is in '23?
It'll be in the last Sunday of June. If the way your schedule appears, it might not be too much of an issue in '23 with utilities. That's fairly easy to jump across, I think. But when you start paving, that could be an issue in '24. We just got a concrete price today. Oh, we're contracted. It's scary.
I didn't. Any other things you?
Thank you.
Wayne Moshik, Wayne Moshik from A&amp;W Long John Silver. Is there a way to collect that one slide of the cost? So you said the owners along the builds, that street, 455,000? That's what we're split up along the way?
That's the property owner's share split using the formula that the cities and the states kind of presented in the past, yes.
Okay. I mean, that part, I'm just looking for consideration. Is that, is that just the street or is it the whole project?
No, it's, so it's not the utilities. It's the concrete and the gravel and the excavation underneath it and then the, essentially the turf establishment along the street.
So if it was a normal street, that's the cost?
Those would be the cost, yeah, correct.
So.
For that stretch from Highway 9 to Fourth.
The bigger amount of water, all the utilities, everything like that?
That's not included in that 455.
Is there anyone else besides us included in that? Just the?
Nope, so it's those that are adjacent, adjacent to the project.
Just along that street?
Yes.
And then you split it up for the size, the length?
Yeah, correct, the length and then also in the depth. And there's a formula to put it into that calculates that.
For wider, we're, that's, we're required to have a formula.
Yeah, correct. Yep, so if you had a skinny long lot, it's different than a wide, narrow lot. It's not real straightforward to explain, but that's generally how they're gonna come up with different prices.
How much is this estimate and then bid lane? How many, how many do you open it up to?
Well, we open it to whoever wants to bid it. Generally in Cresco, we'll get two to four or five bids, just depending on how hungry contractors are, so.
And that would adjust on the assessable, that 400, that would be that part?
Yeah, so the, that, the assessment amount is set. We, the, once the preliminary number is out there, it cannot go any higher than that. So if the bids came in at $3.5 million, that assessable amount can't change. We can't assess it more than that.
But it could go down.
It could go down. And you, and your assessment would go down.
Go for the question that this one is.
Thank you.
Yep, Kriener plot, Fourth Avenue West. I know the big thing that go back forth originally was talk about going up just the Second Avenue and then there was talk about going up to Fourth Avenue, right where I end up to live at. I know there's talk of four inch water main. My question is why end there? Why wasn't it ever decided or talked about the wall up to Sixth Avenue to make the road consistent? Big thing is, are we gonna see in the next 10 to 15 years where the road from Fourth Avenue, Sixth Avenue is now becoming road as it is down right off Highway 9? And are you gonna have areas where rise and sink is gonna start happening and stuff like that? You know, was there considered to go all the way up to Sixth Avenue just to keep it consistent? You know, and the other part two is with the narrowing of the road, you know, you're going from wide down to narrow. Is that gonna be issue for like plowing snow where the snow's gonna, snow piles gonna hit the curb and all of a sudden break the curb going from 36 foot down to 31 foot, you know, during the winter?
Okay, so yes, there was discussion about extending it, I think, kind of the, and shortening the project. There were, I think, dollars, we kind of settled on a dollar amount that they were, or at least the council, and correct me if I'm wrong, as far as where does, how much money to spend and where to draw the line. The Fourth Avenue is kind of where that four inch water main ended. So that was kind of one of the stopping points that was selected. As far as the tapering of the road, so we will try and taper it at the intersection. So on the east side, it will just kind of turn right into the Fourth Street section. So it really won't be all that noticeable. On the west side, it'll be a longer taper to kind of allow plow to go along the curb without too much notice.
And the big reason to narrow was to save money, basically.
Yeah.
And like you said, we did discuss shortening the project and going all the way to the end up by Featherlight, I believe. From where we're ending now and up towards Featherlight, the underground utilities are fairly new there compared to the rest of it.
They're in better shape.
Yeah. And then that's why we chose not to go that far.
And then is there still the talk of beginning, I'll call semi-traffic on that road when it's done? Or has that not been fully approved yet?
Say that again.
So there was talk of being semi-traffic with that project.
I don't know if we can, we can ban it per se, but we've, I mean, the truck route, I believe, is the truck route around?
We really don't.
We don't have one there.
Right. We've talked about making it a truck route to eliminate the truck traffic. I just concerned for those upper business parts like We Mark's and stuff like that in the backside access of H&amp;S Motors and backside A&amp;W, you know, is that gonna affect those businesses? Yeah, and local access like that wouldn't be affected. It's just the traffic up and down that street is what we would try to eliminate eventually. I don't know if it's something that we can do or not, but we've definitely discussed it. I'd always been talking, I didn't know what came up. That's all I am.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
I'm Mayor We Mark, I got a big toe this. So one question to you guys, you have six inches of concrete. Do you feel that's adequate for all the truck traffic that is there?
Well, we were intending to kind of beef up the gravel base to make sure that we keep, keep the trucks, you know, supported. As we go through the design and kind of get an idea of the truck coming, that'll, we'll look into that. But as of right now, we're thinking six inches.
Well, we can deal with that there and we should, because you have a county shop, you have livestock, you have me, you have the trucks going by the mountains. And granted, I don't want to spend any more money. But what I see, would that go back on you if we had replaced tons of concrete in the street? Would that go back on you or would we have to pay it again five years?
No, it wouldn't be as a five year or whatever. It is, if, if there was something that didn't last, that was, we'd have to, there's a bond, there's a certain warranty period that if there were things were cracking, that would have to be fixed. And then anything beyond that, the city'd have to look into that as far as how they felt it was responsibility to take on. So that would be a discussion five years from now. So, yeah.
But somebody should be accountable since we talked about.
Yeah, so it's, it's something and yes, it could be made thicker. It's just how much more cost.
It's six inch now, is that correct?
That's what's per bolt, yes.
No, but what's there now?
I believe it's six inches. We're gonna get.
We, we have cores on there, I don't have the core dated back.
Okay, all right.
Because yeah, you just, did you, do you remember what it was when you went across it or no?
It was all of eight.
It was what?
All of eight in some spots. But still, I mean, you have sand trucks coming in there for the county in the summer and the winter. And then you have livestock going in there every Monday. And there's a lot of weight going down there, plus the Nelson going by, plus me. And so I was just bringing that up for one. And then like Tom said, July 1st would be a good date to start because it's gonna screw all of us up. Well, fair bean and then for my purpose too, I guess, and looking good for myself. But then like Wayne asked, that 455,000, so if these change orders come in that you guys miss, or they miss or whatever, and it increases it, does that increase our?
No, no. So the assessment, the amount that's been proposed is the maximum.
The bid is bid done?
Right, so the bid, so what's presented to the residents is the maximum value that you can be assessed by state law. Any increases, like if the bids come in higher or if there's change orders, that's on the city.
Okay, and then are you gonna charge the contractor if he's not finished by then November 1st building?
So there are provisions to do that. If there's, things aren't complete, we can, that there is provisions, what's called liquidated damages. So then it's up to the council if they want to enforce that or not, so.
Okay, and then the other thing is, is can we do separate bids on pouring our own concrete or no? Or you gotta have a complete package yet?
It would be a complete bid. It would have to be, everything would be for the whole project.
Because if we separate out the concrete, you cannot do that by law or?
Right, it has to, it would have to be bid uniformly. You could split the utilities and then you could split the concrete. But the city needs a one contractor that kind of. of is responsible for all of it. We would want multiple contractors.
Thanks, Aaron.
Good evening. I'm Pat Ryan. I'm representing 218 7th Street. Mitchell McKenzie Ryan. So just some questions about this. I know there's been considerations about the commercial traffic on the street, and I'd like to apply that to the assessment to the residents. I think when I counted, I think I counted up about 12 or so residential lots on this project. And I guess, I guess I know the code is the code, but it just appears to me as when you look at this project, the vast, vast majority of the usage on this road is commercial. The residents might come and go a couple cars, a couple, two or three times a day. I was at Mitchell McKenzie's here, I think a week or two ago, and sat at their dining room table, was working, and I had, there was someone there fixing something at their house. And there was a steady flow of heavy commercial traffic on the street in the hour and a half that I was there on Monday morning. So it, I guess in my opinion, I don't, I don't know if we can do anything on the code on this, but for those 12 residents that own property on this street, it just, it doesn't feel like it's the right thing to do to assess them for a street that's for the good for the entire community, as well as them. I get that. But it just feels like it's the costing on this should be applicable to the amount of traffic and usage on that street, you know, with the commercial traffic. I also think there's causation there. The reason why this street is the way it is is because of that commercial traffic. Water main breaks periodically. I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to figure out why we're in the situation that we're in. I'm not sure the age of this street, but it sure appears as though it's probably not any older than many of the other residential streets here in town, but this one seems to be an issue. So I guess I would just ask that the council would consider reapplying the assessment and, you know, take some relief for the residents along the street. And then the question on the side on the pedestrian ramps, is that a requirement, the ADA ramps?
Yeah. So if there's ramps there now, then they would be replaced with a compliant ramp, something that's meets the ADA standards.
And what if there's no sidewalk?
Then I don't believe we were putting them in, correct? Correct.
Okay. Okay. Do you know which direction the sanitary sewer for the residents that are on the east side of the street, which direction their sewer goes?
So, south of Stock Avenue, it all drains to the south. North of Stock Avenue, sewer drains to the east.
Goes to the east. So it doesn't use that main, that sewer? So those residents don't use that sewer? It goes out through the alley, out behind the houses?
Yeah. So the sewer north of Stock, yeah, there is no sewer under 7th. It actually drains easterly.
Okay.
He said sanitary.
Costing to those residents?
Right. So the sanitary is not at all assessed. So that's a complete city cost.
Okay. And then, so another question I'd have, then, the assessment that was given on the notice, does that relate to the 15% that the resident, or the property owners, that is the amount?
That is, it's about, yeah, 15% of the total cost spread out amongst the residents, property owners along that street.
Okay. So, I just hope you, you know, consider, you know, some relief for the residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Do we know how old that sewer is?
I'd have to look.
I mean, probably 75 years old, maybe now.
I'd have to look. I can't give them.
The part that's under there is old clay, so it's not any modern sewer.
Right. Okay. Anybody else want to come up? Any questions, comments? If not, we're going to close the public hearing. Do we need a motion for that?
So do it.
Second. Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and just again to reiterate what he said, if the council chooses to proceed with this, it eventually gets to a bid and when that bid comes in, it's voted on again. And, you know, like I think Tom said, the price of cement's going up. So, you know, if the project comes in way high, we may choose not to do it. Or they may choose to go ahead with it. So we aren't going to know that for a few months yet. Next on the agenda then is the resolution with respect to the adoption of the resolution of necessity proposed for the 7th Street West reconstruction.
And so basically that resolution is to go forward with the project?
I'll make that motion. I will say I have great sympathy for the residences, but if we change it now, I mean, we did it on the Granger Road, and changing it now would be unfair. So I'll make the motion.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Jan second. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Michelle, on this, can we make it or do we need to put in something to reflect the dates for the accesses for the fair as well as Aaron's property as far as...
That won't be an amendment to the project. That'll just go in the bid when we take it out for bids, so.
Any other questions or comments? Motion was made and seconded.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried. Next on the agenda is a resolution directing preparation of detailed plans and specifications, form of contract, and notice to bidders on the 7th Street West reconstruction.
I'll make the motion.
Second it.
McConnell?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
All right. Number four, public hearing to amend the City of Cresco Code of ordinances by adding new chapter 81 pertaining to recreational vehicles. I need to read anything for that, Aaron.
So you're opening a public hearing for comments or questions?
Any comments or questions regarding proposed ordinance for chapter 81 and recreational vehicles? If not, we'll close the public hearing?
Make the motion. I'll second if you need it.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
And Fortune?
Yes.
Number five is the second reading of the summary of proposed ordinance 501, which amends the Code of ordinances for the City of Cresco, Iowa pertaining to recreational vehicles. Below is the summary of ordinance 501. A full copy of said ordinance may be obtained between 8 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. weekdays at City Hall, 130 North Park Place, Cresco, Iowa, 52136, or on the city's website at www.cityofcresco.com. Section 1, the Code of ordinances of Cresco, Iowa is hereby amended by adding a new chapter 81, recreational vehicles, as summarized below. Recreational vehicles and tents shall be used for vacation or recreation purposes and not used as a place of human habitation for more than seven days in any three-month period. Permanent habitation of recreational vehicles and tents is prohibited. Mobile homes are only allowed in an approved mobile home park. Recreational vehicles shall not be parked upon the boulevard or front yard for more than 48 consecutive hours. Recreational vehicles and small utility or boat trailers may be stored in a rear yard, provided that no living quarters are maintained. Violations may be considered a municipal infraction. The procedures for enforcement of the civil offense shall be governed by chapter 4 of this Code of ordinances. Section 2 repealer, all ordinances or part of ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 3 severability clause, if any section, provision, or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision, or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section 4, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval, and publication as provided by law.
So moved. Second. Fortune?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Number 6, request for sewer adjustment for water not entering the sanitary sewer.
Make that motion. Long as it didn't go in the sewer.
Okay. Second.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
And number 7, similar, request for sewer adjustment for water not entering the sanitary sewer system.
Make the motion.
Second. Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yeah.
Kreener?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
And the final item, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional service agreement with WHKS and Company for the Cresco wastewater treatment plant nutrient reduction study supplement.
So moved.
Second.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
All right. The motion's adjourned.